Listen, everybody down. All the way to the center. See, the trick is, you come in, lawyer, and you put your computer back there so you have a place to go after a session.
Oh, yeah. I think that we are, uh, how are you? I think that we are, uh, we've not put enough on our to-do list. Well, I can't hear anything.
Oh, I see. Period, definitely.
We've got a couple of real quick declarations that we're gonna work on. I have to apologize to everybody here and also to our group from Castle Pub and Ballroom Dancing Month that we were ahead of ourselves and not, we did not do this during Ballroom Dancing Month. We actually were in April. So Larry and whoever, all that you have with you, could you come up and tell us what's going on here real quick? You on?
I didn't expect this, but, um, basically, we're here to represent Castle Pub, the former Ballroom Dancing Club here in Des Moines that was founded in 1913 at Point Sherman Place. And so this year, we're celebrating our 100th season of continuous ballroom dancing in Des Moines. And we're having a big celebration of the Scotty Frey and his history on May in honor of this situation, so.
All right, and so let's give a great big hand as we're gonna, uh, (applause). Since I read it before, we won't read it again, so. Congratulations, Castle Pub. All right. Hold it. Parkinson. Is Glenn Lyons here?
No.
All right, Glenn is not. We're gonna talk quickly about Train Day. You wanna quickly fill everybody in?
This coming Saturday is National Train Day. One day that we take to recognize the county, we have railroad passengers, railroad passengers, railroad freight. We're working hard to get passenger trains into Iowa. Probably aware of that, and you're not, you should be now. That's our goal, is to get passenger trains into Iowa City and move it across the state so we can ride passenger trains through across the state environmentally, great, safe, comfortable when you're tall, crowded in like it is in there all the time.
Great work.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna quickly read it. "Des Moines strives to maintain a comfortable, efficient, and reliable, healthy economy, sound, and environmentally sustainable transportation network for its citizens and guests. And whereas passenger trains offer a great opportunity for Des Moines to expand the connections of Iowa's urban and rural areas to Chicago and beyond while making significant contributions to improve mobility, economic competitiveness, community revitalizations, and reduce fuel use and emissions, which helps make our community and the world a more enjoyable place to live, work, and visit. And whereas passenger trains to and from our city can connect Iowans to each other in the country, enhance the economic vitality of business and areas, and make Iowa and Des Moines a more attractive place. And whereas the promotion and achievement of our passenger rail network especially aligns through Des Moines for the benefit of citizenry today and future generations depends on the city of Des Moines. And now therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and all the citizens of Des Moines and quite frankly, the state of Iowa, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 11, 2013, as Train Day and urge all of our citizens of Des Moines to celebrate Train Day in Des Moines and to support efforts to bring passenger rail to the city." And I'll say, not only to bring it to, but let's take it through and let's get to the West Coast as well. And let's urge not only the folks in Washington, D.C., but let's urge the folks up in Capital to help promote rail and hopefully, none of them will support us as well. So thank you, it's good. All right, everybody.[367.02][367.02](applause). All right, we're gonna start the city council, sure?
Thank you, you guys, Jim, for having me.
Yeah.
Prior to the start of our meeting this evening, we're gonna have a quick invocation or message from one of our council members, and tonight, it's gonna be from our own council member, Hallie Grease. And for those who would stand for this occasion, I'd ask you to stand at this moment.
Please join me in a word of prayer. Dear God, we just thank you that you're good today, God, that you love us today, and that you desire a relationship with each one of us. God, tonight, we just ask that you give us humility, and wisdom, and guidance, and civility in our discussions. God, we just pray that you would be with us here tonight, in your name, amen.
LS, clerk, take role, please.
County.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Grease. Hensley.
Here.
Mahaffey.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented and/or as amended?
Move.
It's been moved.
We got municipal housing.
Sorry?
We got municipal housing.
Okay. So all in favor of that, say aye. Opposed? We're gonna, could I quickly have a motion to recess the city council and reconvene its municipal housing agency? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item one on the municipal housing agency is for roll call.
County.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Grease. Hensley.
Here.
Mahaffey.
Here.
Meyer.
Present.
Moore.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I'm approving the Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency to expense $500,000 in the net restricted assets, Section 8, Housing Assistant Payment Reserves to issue additional Section 8 Housing Choice Vouchers, Board Communication Number 13-209. Anybody in the audience or our board have any questions?
I'll move.
All right, it's been moved. Doug, this has to do in part with a sequester to cover those units? Okay. All right, it's been moved. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item three is receive and file federal calendar year 2012 Housing Choice voucher family self-sufficiency HCVFSS program report, the Board Communication Number 13-211. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this? Do we have a motion?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item four is receive and file the federal fiscal year 2010 Public Housing Family Self-Sufficiency Grant PHFSS Program Report, Board Communication Number 13-212. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item? See, none. Could we have a motion to receive and file that report?
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, item passes. Item five is authorizing negotiations and approving the conveyance to Greater Des Moines Habitat for Humanity, Inc., for the disposition sale of 2021 Washington Avenue, Board Communication Number 13-208. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to that disposition of 2021 Washington? Seeing none, could we have a motion on that?
Move.
The item's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the item passes. Could we have a motion to adjourn and reconvene his city council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You now sit as city council, or item three is approving the consent agenda items three through 40. These are routine items generally which are taken as one vote unless somebody pulls for clarification or to add something for our discussion. Can be pulled either by a member of the audience or a member of the city council. Let me see. Tonight, Councilmember Moore is pulling item 13 and wishes to speak. Are there any other items? Seeing none, could we have a motion for the balance?
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. That takes us directly to item 13, which is land property transaction. City council initiated request for the vacation in the north-south alley between East Martin, Luther King Jr. Parkway and Raccoon Street between southeast Fifth Street and southeast Sixth Street, Council Communication Number 13-218. Mr. Moore.
Um, I had a discussion with the people that owned the abutting property to the east, and they brought to my attention, there was an alley in this location. And after I asked staff about it and discovered there was an alley, it's a totally unused alley, um, I didn't see any reason for the alley being there, so I asked to have it vacated for two reasons. One would be, it would make one contiguous piece of property for the city to market when the day comes, instead of having to vacate an alley at a later date. Also, the people who own the business to the east, we discussed with them within the last several years, the potential of leasing them that land for a parking lot. This would give them control over everything and not having the alley hanging out the side that they couldn't use. I would like to make it very clear that at this point, I would not support leasing them that land for a parking lot, um, due to the fact, um, they have, seem to have an issue with coming in and compliance with everything they do on two different properties. So I'll move 13.
Seven, yes?
All right, that completes the consent agenda. Takes us to item 41. Item 41 is amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding handicap passenger loading and unloading zones, Council Communication Number 13-214. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item? Amending Chapter 114, loading and unloading.
I'll move, um, item 41, and I'll request to waive the non-prepublished second and third readings.
All right. Item's been moved. Any discussion?
Seven, yes?
Item 42's amending Chapter 42, coincidentally, of the municipal code regarding nuisances and nuisance abatement notices and hearings, Council Communication Number 13-232. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item? Sir? If you'll step to the, um...
Excuse me.
Yep?
My name is Stanley Struck.
Right over here.
My name is Stanley Struck. I live at 1423 East 9th Street. I'm proud of my home. I brought it in from Urbandale, rebuilt it, and it's a beautiful home. I take care of my property to the best of my ability, but, yeah, the nuisance law is made in such a way now that they sent a letter I never got, and the enforcer came in without even letting me know nothing, ramsacked into my property, took out what they wanted, left what they wanted. They didn't remove everything, they didn't clean my property. I don't think the men knew what they were doing, they was just doing their thing. I had a lawn sale on Sunday, that was up for the whole weekend, and it was late in the evening already, it was getting dark, so I put the stuff around the house, covered it with a tarp, and I was so beat, when I went to sleep, I didn't wake up right away in the morning, and somebody come beating on my door. Says, uh, "What is it?" He says, "I'm from the city. Your property is declared a nuisance, and we're here to clean it up. Move your truck out of your driveway, now." I said, "Wait, wait, just a minute." I came to the door with no clothes on, except my underwear. And I says, "Let me call a lawyer." He says, "Move it now, or any impediment on your part, you'll go downtown in handcuffs." I said, "Whoa, just a minute, let me get pants on." I moved my truck, and I was so in shock, I didn't know that my truck was empty. They was in my yard, they even emptied out my pickup truck, which was legally parked in my yard. And it was stuff that I was picking up after I had construction and reconstruction on my garage and my house. But I fell off a ladder, and I ended up in the hospital for two weeks. I spent a week in emergency, intensive care. This enforcer was catting around my property, taking pictures. He even went into my neighbor's property to take a picture across the fence. He was really out to get me. He didn't talk to me, and then when I did get a chance to talk to him, I says, "Why did you talk to me?" He says, "I tried to, but you wouldn't answer the door." I says, "Was my truck in the driveway?" He says, "I don't remember." How quick he don't remember. If my truck is not in a driveway, 'cause I live alone, I'm not home. And his words was, "You didn't wanna answer your door." Now, how did he know I didn't wanna answer the door? I'm proud of my place. I even helped my neighbors. I can bring in a string of neighbors here. I cut branches for them, pulled out weeds for them, I did all I could to help my neighbors. I like my neighborhood. I've been living here since 1972. And this man came in, and then after they took what they wanted from my garage sale, they strung, and they did the picture taken, they strung the stuff they didn't want alongside the house and left it. They didn't even pick it up and get rid of it. They took away the expensive stuff, the good stuff. Where did they take it? I don't know. I had a privacy fence made into a compound around by my garage. Behind it, I had stuff that I wanted, and it could stand to be outside. I pay taxes on my property, I thought I had a right to use it. But according to him, no. They tore my privacy fence down. They tore it down, and they devastated everything behind the fence. I had a refrigerator there. They took it, they didn't destroy it, they took it in the pickup truck. Where did they take it? I don't know. It was like a brand-new, twenty-few-foot refrigerator. I had it loaded with bread and roast, I was feeding the birds. It was behind a privacy fence that these men couldn't get into, they had to tear the fence down to get in, so it wasn't a danger to nobody. How do they have the right to do this? They said, uh, when he says, "You got my letter notifying you of your violation of the nuisance ordinance." I said, "I got no letter. I wasn't home for about two weeks, anything could've happened." He said, "Well, it doesn't matter." He said, "They don't have to go ahead and send a registered letter no more. It's been amended by the city council." So now they just buy regular mail, and I didn't get it. I was being persecuted by the city. They put a lien against my house, they're gonna take my house from me, just because this enforcer didn't know his job.
Stanley, I might suggest that if Phil Dolefield, Phil? Could you come up and possibly spend a few minutes with this gentleman and see if we can't get around some resolution? We'll refer your comments to city manager and city attorney. Yep? You have a lawyer?
I have Drake Law School because I can't get a lawyer. I went to about 24 lawyers.
Oh, boy.
That famous words they use is, "Not my expertise."
Okay, Phil? All right, apparently, we've got a supervisor lawyer, so we're gonna have to unfortunately speak with your lawyer.
Mr. Mayor, please. After, after three years, and post-moment of trial, two times, I finally went to court, and six and a half weeks ago, we had a trial on this here nuisance violation, and the judge still hasn't ruled, six and a half weeks later, onto what? They found out that the federal law supersedes the local laws, and you can't go ahead and enter on a person's property without due notification to the owner. And they denied that. And the fact is, they never sent me a registered letter.
Stanley, I think at this moment, we're gonna receive and file your comments, I'm gonna refer it to our attorney, but I think at this moment, since you are represented, we're gonna have to speak to your attorney, and maybe you at the same time, but that's for the lawyers to sort out, I guess, at this moment.
You'll talk to Bob O from Drake Law School.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
You bet. Thank you.
Frank?
Yes.
Back, I think it was about three years ago, he called me, I went over and visited and observed his property. There were reason to be concerned about this, how, what the quality of his. He told me he was collecting things for a yard sale at that point in time, and, and he, just like he told there, that he said they took the good stuff and left the junk. And so, I assumed this, he then contacted the Arms Bedsmen, I think it was, and he provided me a letter here tonight that he got back, that they worked with the Drake Law School. So, um, it's, uh, it's been going on for three years, so.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion to receive and file his comments and refer to the manager and the city attorney, who will speak to your attorney.
And then I'll make a motion to move, um, item 42, which is the actual ordinance.
Mr. Coleman?
Seven, yes?
Uh, item 43 is a communication report from Tanya Suarez Tigner of 5447 Route 63 Highway, R-63 Highway Norwalk, to speak regarding Capital Pub and Hot Dog Company's city lot in adjoining alley.
Good evening, I'm Tanya Suarez Tigner, 5447 R-63 Highway. I was coming to speak to you all in regards to the alley. I'm not exactly sure what happened when the item got moved to the beginning. Do the seven votes mean that it was conveyed to the city?
No, the actual recommendation was to refer it back to staff to start the process.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you for the clarification. I would like to request that, um, well, I would like the alley to be a part of our development at 401 Southeast Fifth Street, which is on, um, the same lot as the Capital Pub and Hot Dog. I'm also the owner of the Capital Pub and Hot Dog. We are in the middle of a development down there, and I would like to request that the alley be vacated and conveyed to myself. There's a policy for vacation and conveyance, and it reads that the purpose is to establish a uniform method of placing value on streets and alleys, vacating and conveying these unneeded and in many instances, unused parcels to the abutting property owners would save the city miscellaneous maintenance costs and also put the land back on the tax rules. And that is what I would like to ask this evening.
Okay, that's your request? Okay.
I could...
Go ahead.
Thanks for coming, and we have talked, obviously, and you're in my ward, and, uh, I think that everybody, after talking to staff and talking to you and everybody, we wanna get this done, we wanna get, um, something for you to work over there. And I think what Skip was referring to, Councilman Coleman, is, uh, a desire by staff and everybody here that we get everything in conformance and bring everything up to speed, and then we can take another look at where we're going with this alley and that sort of thing. But I think it's everybody's intent that we move forward and get this done, and so... And we talked, and, and you may, you've made the commitment that you'll get, get up to speed, right, Brian?
Yes, we are committed.
And so, I think it's the intent, I don't wanna speak for a future vote, but that we move forward with getting that done for you. Is that, is that your understanding as well?
Yes.
So I think we're taking steps, and I'll, well, we'll, we'll talk about that. We'll move to a receive and file your comments and try and get this done.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bob's out?
Six, yes?
All right, let's open our hearings at 5:02. First item is 44, and the request from Miguel Sorsedo to rezone 1161 22nd Street from R-160, one-family low-density residential, to R-4 multi-family residential, to allow a five-unit multifamily dwelling. Plan and zoning commission recommends denial. A, the Plan and Zoning Commission letter recommending denial of amendments to the Des Moines 2020 community character plan to revise the future land use designation for... from low-medium density to high-density residential was, again, their letter is to deny. Is there anyone here to speak on this hearing? Is Miguel here?
I see several individuals from the Drake neighborhood. And I, maybe just to add, I know that the recommendation is to deny. The Drake neighborhood is not supportive. It's counter to the plan that's been approved. And there's just been some excellent development done over in Drake neighborhood with the multifamilies downsizing to the single families. So I would recommend uphold P&amp;Z's denial. Hallie, did you want to add?
Seven, yes?
All right. Item's denied. Item forty-five, on the conveyance of a portion of property at the southeast corner of Southwest Ninth Street and Bell Avenue to Get 'n Go Convenience Stores, Inc., for $7,500, Council Communication number thirteen dash two thirteen. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Item forty-five.
I'll move forty-five.
Item forty-five has been moved. Any discussion?
Seven, yes?
Item forty-six, on a request from Kiting Properties to amend the Meadowlands PUD conceptual plan at 7,400 Meadowlands Drive to revise the configuration of seventy residential units permitted from seven two-story multiple-family dwellings to thirty-five single-story two-family dwellings, subject to conditions.
I'll move forty-six unless we have speakers.
All right. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? Item forty-six, Kiting Properties. You intend to speak, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Are you for it?
Yes.
I just moved it.
You probably don't want to.
You're going to win, so...
Before you, before you say anything, that could change my mind, maybe we'll...
Seven, yes?
You okay? You want to talk? Okay, item forty-seven, on a request from Hy-Vee, Inc., for an amendment to Southgate C4 Development Plan to allow a gas convenience store use at the northwest corner of 3221 Southeast Fourteenth Street. Anybody here to speak to this item?
I'll wait a bit, a little bit longer this time. I'll move, I'll move forty-seven.
Any discussion? Item forty-seven has been moved. All right. That completes our hearings at 5:06. Item forty-eight has been withdrawn. Item forty-nine is a request from the Neighborhood Revitalization Board to amend the Des Moines 2020 community character plan to incorporate the Lower Beaver neighborhood plan as an element, Council Communication number thirteen dash two thirty-five. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item? Item forty-nine.
I will move this item.
All right. It's been moved.
Seven, yes?
Item fifty is the naming of the Birdland Park Shelter House as the J.N. Darling, Darling Shelter House, Council Communication number thirteen dash two seventeen. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item?
Honorable mayor and members of the council, CJ Stevens, 4900 Woodland Avenue, I'd just like to say a few words about the naming of the shelter house. Ding Darling was an individual who loved the American earth as few ever have. I hope it is within his spirit that you vote today in his honor, the shelter, in his honor, not just because he was a famous citizen of our state, but because of his deep desire to conserve our natural resources. Ding was an Iowa and a natural, a national institution. Even though late in life, he belonged to our nation, his deepest loyalties were to the values that he learned in our state of Iowa. He was instrumental in the start of the, excuse me, in the start of the Isaac Walton leave in Des Moines, worked to encourage the Des Moines Garden Club to donate $400,000 to Landscape Greenwood Park in 1929, and went on to encourage the federal government to launch conservation efforts, which is now known as the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Division. Excuse me. Although Darling was unquestionably a leading cartoonist in his day, his true advocacy was conservation of our precious natural resources. It has been written that Darling's love of nature and his distrust of politicians, sorry I have to read this, combined to, combined to create a fiery desire to see politicians' hand removed from the natural resources cookie jar. As you vote today, I hope it is with his spirit of long conservation mission, not just because he was a famous resident of our state. If you need to see his continuing efforts in motion, I encourage you to visit Sanibel Island, where daily the people of the island and that government support his ongoing mission, which started over a hundred years ago. They live and support his mission on a daily basis, not only at the refuge, but after his mission, which he is most famous for, in their city. I might also add that he was not really pop, desirous of having his name on buildings or anything of that nature. He was an individual who, they wanted to put his name on a postage stamp, and he said, "No, never. Please do it in the honor of conservation." So I hope that it is, is within this regard that we honor Ding Darling because of his mission, not just because of his famous name. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. It saved me from going through a lot of that because I think that, you know, in addition to that, he was the father of the federal duck stamp, and they, his family, had donated some park lands also, and very much a conservative. And I think it's very honorable for us to name the Birdland Shelter there after Ding Darling. And I would move this item.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment on that last item. I have spoke with CJ about the fact that there's a preserve down in Sanibel Island, and CJ spends some time down there, and the people down there were not aware he was from this area or that we were doing anything in his honor. I would like to have staff contact CJ and see if we couldn't start working some sort of agreement between Des Moines and Sanibel Island so that we've got something south and something north.
Okay. Item fifty-one, items regarding Nolan Plaza Civic Center Theater Block, Council Communication number thirteen dash two thirty-one. A is approving a schematic design, and B is approving the Urban Renewal Development Grant Agreement with Des Moines and the Performing Arts. I think maybe we ought to have a quick overview so that the general public can see, at least conceptually, what, what we're talking about.
Mr. Mayor, I would note that there are several representatives from the Civic Center here, Jeff Chelsvig and his crew. Erin Olson Douglas from the city has been our main person in terms of work with them on the design of it, and I think she is prepared to make a few comments about the plan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Erin Olson Douglas, Economic Development Coordinator for the city. Just as a point of orientation on this drawing, you see the Civic Center, Capitol Square, Locust Street, Walnut Street, and Third Street. About five years ago, we started, the Civic Center came forward with some interest in talking about Nolan Plaza. It's been a source of discussion in the community for a number of years. At that point, they hired Ken Smith, landscape architect, a landscape architecture firm out of New York, who's actually a native Iowan and graduate of Iowa State, to come in and do a three-day charrette in the community. Those three-day mute, three days, had a couple of public meetings as a part of the process, and produced a framework for the design and a set of principles for the design that you see here today. Over the course of the last five years, the Civic Center has been working on refining that design and doing private fundraising in the community. And what you see here today as a result of that work, for orientation, what they are proposing is grove and garden area along the north edge, preserving the Oldenburg umbrella sculpture in its present location, a new fountain. So the fountain that presently sits roughly in this area will be removed and the surface brought to gray. These are a couple of surface fountains with interactive sprays that will dance between these two areas. The area to the south will be replenished with a grove of trees, a mixed oak and hickory grove is what's being proposed. There is a significant public art sculpture, an LED lighted interactive sculpture that will be in this area. Within the grove of trees, there will be a series of garden spaces below them with benches at their perimeter. We've been working with the Peacemakers group to, to discuss this area, and the decision that we've arrived at is that they have provided the design team with a series of peace quotes that will be presented on these benches in this area. The peace rock with the medallion will be relocated from its present location about halfway along Walnut Street down to this corner, and then there will be a gathering space to the western edge. This area will be a paved surface area that can host large community gatherings in this space, and the fountain can actually be turned off. It's a kind of a skim on the, on the pavement. And so this entire area, if need be, can be allowed to present large public performances, events, rallies, these sorts of things. The budget for the project is an eight million-dollar construction project, about a million dollars for the public art, and a two million dollar maintenance and operating endowment is being contemplated with, as a part of this project. The city staff is recommending a $400,000 City of Des Moines commitment in the form of an economic development grant given to Des Moines Performing Arts over the course of four years after the completion of the construction of this project.
Any questions? Thank you, Erin. All right. Christine?
I see, I see people out in the audience. I don't know if they want to speak or not, but I just am really happy with the project and the way everybody's worked together to address it and identify the issues. And I think that we've got a win-win project here. I'm excited about the public fundraising, coming together and being able to go forward with this project because it is such a, an integral part of, and linkage to the downtown community. So I'm happy to move item fifty-one, fifty-one A and B. But I don't, did you want to speak, Chet?
Chet Quinn, Old Fire Station Number Four, 1041 Eighth Street. And it's just a great pleasure to stand here and be able not to raise some objection to what's going on, but to say, the citizens who are so interested in the preservation of the peace park that dates back to Bishop Dingman and Rabbi Jay Goldberg are very pleased with this proposal and like...
Chet, thank you for your ongoing commitment to peace and to everybody that's working with you. It's a worthy project, and let's hope we can pass it on to future generations. And you're going to see those quotes. You're going to see the rock. You're going to see the sculpture up by the fire station, and hopefully a number of others. Chet and I are talking about some other opportunities around the, around the city. So keep it up, Chet. Thanks.
Mayor?
Yep.
I want to assure CJ Stevens, I spoke with the city manager today, and they're still planning on bringing this schematic to Tree Des Moines for your input into the tree selection.
Well, I was quite surprised you see this on the agenda because we had scheduled meeting for tomorrow night. And I just, the only question I have on behalf of the...
CJ Stevens, 4900 Woodland Avenue, president of Tree Des Moines. I, I'm a little concerned about how many trees are being included in this project as with public gatherings. And many times, we have hundred-day temperatures in this city, and with masses of concrete, people seek shade. And that's what keeps them downtown, keeps the downtown environment what we are trying to work for it to be. And this is a natural resource that we had there that was blown down or taken down. And those trees that were growing there, I'm sure were there for at least maybe thirty-five, forty-five, fifty years. I'm not sure, before my time in the city. But I just want to make sure that we are doing as much as we can to shade the area, to encourage people to stay downtown, spend money downtown, because we have huge competition in the suburbs for these areas. Thank you.
Seven, yes?
All right. This evening, we have two extra items on our agenda. First item is from Marilyn Vicker at 5221 Village Run Avenue, number 101, to speak regarding speed bumps on Guthrie. Sponsor is Councilmember Moore.
I'm Marilyn Vicker from that address he just read out in 5221 Village Run Avenue, number 101. I've been an East Side resident virtually my entire life. Just turned eighty. Been a long time. There's probably nothing that vixes the east side northeast part of Des Moines any more than the speed bumps or humps, whatever you may call them, on Guthrie. When they first built the overpass and we finally could get past the railroad tracks, we find there's a barricade at the end before you get to the houses. One man that lived west of the barricade got that installed. There was another petition from the rest of East Side, and they were taken down. And lo and behold, there's speed bumps, humps, whatever you call them. The state of Iowa has a law against speed bumps, and I understand that's why you named them humps. But it doesn't matter what you call them. That's what they are. You can call them butterflies, but they're still butter, speed bumps. And I have this petition. Some of the people that signed this don't live on East Side, but they work down in that area. They need to get back and forth to Lutheran Hospital, to my cardiologist, to the health clinic on East Fourteenth and Guthrie. And I find it amazing that the only way to control traffic on that block is with those bumps. But you don't have to put them anyplace else in the city. You don't need them on University or East Fourteenth or Floor Drive. You can control the traffic, except in that block. And I move that they be removed. Thank you.
All right. Skip?
Marilyn, you want to hand your petition to Councilman Coleman. I move to receive and file.
Thank you, Skip.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Items received and filed petition.
I'd like to move to receive and file Marilyn's report to us and that we give it back to city staff for a report in two weeks as to what we have there and what we can or cannot do with them, why they're there. do with them, why they're there.
Several of the people that signed that said they would...
Could you step to the microphone? I'm sorry, Marilyn.
Several of the people that signed that said that they think the city owes them a new undercar...
Undercarriage.
Undercarriage and work that they've had to pay to get redone.
I think we passed that item, didn't we? Okay, item two.
We didn't vote on that, Frank.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item two, the extra items, again, from Councilmember Moore, to speak regarding daycares and family pets.
In the last few years, we've had several instances where dogs were brought forth to be cleared vicious due to the fact they'd injured children in a daycare. And as we all know about the tragedy recently in another community near here, where a family pet actually killed a child that was there for daycare. I'd like to refer this item back to staff and to legal for report on this, see if we have any control at all in Des Moines over daycare and pets being around the children in daycares.
All right, we, Mr. Moore, you want a motion to receive your comments and refer it to staff?
Yes.
All right.
Seven yes.
All right, could we have a motion to adjourn the city council and reconvene as Board of Health?
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our first item we now sit is the Board of Health is approving the legal department to proceed with court action, seeking authority to abate public nuisance at 2715 Boston Avenue. It's a garage structure and accessory structure. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? 2715 Boston Avenue. Seeing none, could we have a motion to approve the legal department to proceed?
I'll move.
It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, item passes. Do we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We sit adjourned. I want to thank everybody for attending this evening.